The September 2nd, 2021, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll rise, please. If you'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have? We have one person signed up for in-person public comment. I have two digital public comments. Is there anyone who is attending virtually who would like to make public comments? So raise your hand now so I can add you to the list.
Madam Mayor, Crystal Colley and Lynn Williams have raised their hand.
Okay. Crystal Colley.
And Lynn Williams.
Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
Lynn Laurian?
Lynn Williams.
Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And also Helen Youngblood.
Any others?
That's all I see, Mayor.
Okay. We will, with that, have to really limit it to three minutes per person. So if, first of all, Ben McDowell. If, and if you would give your name and your address for the Clerk's record, please.
Okay. My name is Ben McDowell. I actually reside at 133 McDowell Drive in Canton, North Carolina. And I'm a business owner here at 429 North Main Street in Hendersonville. And I wanted to speak about the item number seven, section F, about the small-scale manufacturing, and just what an importance it is to my business. So my wife and I own Willow Hill Soap Company, and we actually just had our grand opening this past Saturday. This is our second location. We're based primarily in Canton. We also, we have a manufacturing and retail store there. And through God's graces, allowed us to really expand. So we looked at the second location, fell in love with Hendersonville, so we decided to take the old Shelley's Jewelry Store over. It's currently just retail only. Part of the importance of the manufacturing for us is we're basically using the same type of equipment as a bakery would use. We manufacture everything from scratch, 100%. It's the same type of equipment, like I say, as a bakery. It's an artisan-type product. We employ about seven full-time people and about six part-time people. We're looking to expand that and grow. This facility would allow us to do that. And especially with COVID and the way that the country's been in the last year and a half, we use our employees as utility employees. So we pay above-average wage, and we get some really good people. And not only are they waiting on our customers, they're also able to assist us in the manufacturing process, which helps me as a business owner save costs. So it's an extreme importance to me for that to be allowed for us to potentially manufacture in that location. Somebody have any questions for me?
No, it's just telling.
Thank you. Come see us.
And there will be a formal public hearing about that.
Okay.
Put that on the agenda. Is it possible, get a timer on screen?
It, yeah. It was there, I think.
Okay. Well, maybe it was back there.
It's on the side.
Oh, okay. It wasn't where I could see it, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Crystal Colley?
Hello, I'm Crystal Colley. I reside at 627 Fifth Avenue West here in Hendersonville. My public comment is a thank you to the City of Hendersonville, as well as the Henderson County Public Library. On July the 1st, I had seen a post by Smart Start Partnership for Children, and it was an installation that was going to happen in seven parks here in our county that dealt with Story Walk. So Story Walk is basically a book that is put on poster boards, and parents can take their children to the park for those children who are learning how to read and teach them how to read. And I thought that was a wonderful thing. However, Story Walk was not in Sullivan Park or the Four Seasons Rotary Park, two parks that have communities close to them that, you know, would definitely love to have Story Walk available. And so thank you, City of Hendersonville, for helping out with putting, placing, sorry, Story Walk in those two parks, Sullivan Park and the Four Seasons Rotary Park. Also, thank you to John Connet, as well as Hendersonville City Works, Friends of Downtown, that has helped tremendously with the annual community fest that will be this Sunday in Sullivan Park from 1:00 to 7:00. Thank you so much. And doing these two things, this is what inclusion is all about. I know the City of Hendersonville is trying to do many things for diversity, inclusion, equity. And so Story Walk, of course, and all of the wonderful things you guys are doing, really makes me proud and happy, of course, to be here in Hendersonville, as well as everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. Lynn Williams.
Hi. Yes. My name is Lynn Williams.
Yep. Yes, if you could just give your address, and then go ahead.
Mayor, I think she lost connection because she is unmuted.
Okay. Let's go on to Helen Youngblood. Go on to Helen Youngblood, and then if Ms. Williams gets back on, we will get her in.
Helen Youngblood, you've been unmuted?
Um, Madam Mayor, my item was, actually, I'm here to speak on item 7E, so you can go ahead and take me off this item.
Okay. Thank you. I have two digital public comments. The first one is from James and April Thompson, 316 Jordan Street, Hendersonville. And the comment is, "We retired here because Hendersonville was noted as a great retirement place. It was even touted as a bird sanctuary. We have loved that it was such a quiet, peaceful place until recently. We were horrified that the city actually sponsored a motorcycle cavalcade recently. We used to love dining al fresco on Main Street, but we then decided to only eat there on pedestrian days in future. Well, Wednesday evening, we forgot and paid the price. Four motorcycles and two motorcycle wannabes roared by as loudly as possible during our brief meal. We will not forget again. We request a noise ordinance like Chimney," they probably mean Chimney Rock, "has." And the second one is from Lyndon Jones, 192 Piney Mountain Road, Hendersonville. "Street painting, Sugarloaf Road's lines are almost nonexistent, and it is a huge safety hazard at night." So I'm not sure how much we can do on Sugarloaf Road, but maybe DOT could do that. Okay. Do we have Ms. Williams back on?
We've unmuted her, Mayor.
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Williams, if you could go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. I'm Lynn Williams, 309 Chadwick Avenue. My comment today, first, I wanted to thank the council for their service and dedication and time. I wanted to thank the city staff and employees and first responders for all they do for our community. My comment today is particularly about Boyd Park. Boyd Park is a very sacred historic landmark within Hendersonville city limits. When I go there to visit, there is a plaque there that talks about the history. I took a picture of it. It says, "Originally part of the Anderson Notarman Estate, in 1936, Bert A. Boyd donated money to build a city park with tennis and shuffleboard courts. In the 1960s, the teen candy relocated here, and in 1974, the city took over the mini-golf from Clifton Shipman. And in 2007, the mini-golf course was named for Laura Corn, who worked here 35 summers." This plaque is placed by the Historic Preservation Commission. It was designated as such by the commission. The Preservation Commission is a very important body within our city, as you'll also see later today, as they talk about the Grayosry Mill. I request that we please get a review and recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission's response about protecting Boyd Park, and also in consideration of the 1,600 concerned residents and visitors who have raised their voice in a petition that is online now to save Boyd Park. The role of the council is to express the will of the people to provide opportunities and protect our precious historic legacy. The HPC plays a vital role in protecting Hendersonville's unique heritage. Please include their insight into protecting Boyd Park and Laura Corn, but please, please, please save this park at this historic location and help us find a solution for all interested parties. I support Hendersonville Fire Department and everything they would like, and I really hope that we can find a solution. We've been pushing for this for almost a year and a half now, and I please, please, please ask the council to hear our pleas before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. First item of business is consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda? Not a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, move City Council, approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the item, the agenda as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and we have our agenda. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or if not, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, move City Council, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and taking care of all of those. Now, we have some presentations. The first one is for Constitution Week, and is Penny Summing, is going to be receiving this one? So this is the proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Continental Convention, and whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution has been the foremost advocate for the awareness, promotion, and celebration of Constitution Week, and initiated its observance in 1955, when the organization petitioned the U.S. Congress to dedicate September 17th to 23rd of each year to the commemoration of Constitution Week. And whereas the United States Congress adopted the resolution, and on August 2nd, 1956, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed it into public law, number 915. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, to encourage the study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787, and to inform people that the Constitution is the basis of America's great heritage and the foundation of our way of life, and to emphasize U.S. citizens' responsibility to protect, defend, and preserve the Constitution. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion by designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2021, to be Constitution Week in the City of Hendersonville, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. So. Here you go. Would you like to say anything?
We have lots of activities throughout the month in celebration of the United States of America. And so we just thank you for your support. All municipalities and his family have done proclamation, and we certainly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. And we have one for suicide prevention and awareness. This is for Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and is intended to affirm the need for suicide prevention awareness, to increase the community's awareness about suicides warning signs, to reduce the stigma associated with suicide, and to advocate for the availability of mental health services to all. And whereas suicide is a complex but preventable health issue that requires compassion, empathy, trust, understanding, and access to professional services. And whereas, according to the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide rates increased 33% between 1999 and 2019, and suicide was responsible for more than 47,500 deaths in 2019. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the 2nd leading cause of death for people ages 10 to 34. And whereas suicide prevention is especially vital for youth. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, 16.5% of United States youth ages 6 to 17 experienced a mental health disorder in 2016, and 18.8% of high school students and 11.8% of young adults aged 18 to 25 reported serious thoughts of suicide. And whereas, according to the Trevor Project, young people who identified as LGBTQ+ are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide as compared to their heterosexual counterparts. Whereas suicide and its associated mental health conditions are family and community challenges. NAMI reports that at least 8.4 million Americans provide care to an adult with a mental or emotional health issue, that high school students with significant symptoms of depression are more than twice as likely to drop out of school compared to their peers, that mental illness and substance abuse disorders are involved in one out of every eight emergency department visits, and more than 70% of youth in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosed mental illness. Now therefore, I, Barbara Volk, Mayor of the City of Hendersonville, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Jody Gravasi, I'll give this to you. If you would like to explain who you are, why you're getting this, and if you'd like to say anything else. Thank you.
Yes. So Matt needs to speak as well. So we're representing the Partnership for Health, and I think the partnership just felt like, given everything that's happening in the world and what's happening with our kids these days, it's just a very important time to bring the attention, bring to everybody's attention that it's okay to not be okay. And if people are, if anybody you know, if anybody reaches out to you, listen to them. Don't set it aside. If you yourself need help, reach out to somebody. The Health Department website has a list of resources under the behavioral health side page, if anybody wants to look for resources.
And Mayor Volk, I will just say that thank you on behalf of the school system. I'm blessed to be in a great job in a great school system and in a wonderful community that supports all, including those that face these challenges. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Next, we have a presentation on the Hands-on Children's Museum, an update from Joseph Knight.
Good evening, honorable members of Hendersonville City Council. My name is Joseph Knight, and I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Hands-on Children's Museum and the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. I stand before you today to express sincere appreciation for your continued support of Hands-on. This month, Hands-on turns 14 years old. Can you believe that? 14 years. And the support received from the City of Hendersonville over those years has empowered our organization to serve over 400,000 children throughout this great city and throughout the western region of North Carolina. In addition to providing a top-notch educational resource for our community, the museum is also a major economic driver with an approximate annual economic impact of 1.6 million annually to the city. Earlier this year, the City of Hendersonville and Hands-on formed a public-private partnership to develop and help sustain the People's Museum and Walk of Fame, a new division of the Hands-on organization, an expansion of our mission to the community. The People's Museum and Walk of Fame will celebrate the history and culture and diversity of Black, Indigenous, and people of color who call our great city and county home. This evening, I'd like to share an update with you regarding our progress. As you may recall, this year, the city invested $39,000 to build the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. Shortly after receiving that funding within just a three-month period, because of our partnership with the city, Hands-on was successful of securing approximately $125,000 in additional funding through grant to individual donations from members of this community and the region. It's mind-blowing, and it's because of the leadership and guidance of this city council and your investment organization that we were able to leverage additional funding to support the project. The People's Museum and Walk of Fame is going to be part of the museum's newly renovated west wing, and progress is underway with construction. As a matter of fact, shortly before driving over here, we just finished getting our carpet and our floors installed within that space. And I'm happy to report that we are on schedule to open the People's Museum and Walk of Fame by the end of the fall season. Furthermore, I also like to say that the city's commitment to provide the museum $207,000 within funding within the next five years has been critical in helping us not only secure capital funding to expand the museum, which involves the development of the People's Museum and Walk of Fame, but also to aid in our recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. As you all know, COVID-19 has had a great effect on many organizations, both for nonprofit and for private, but for children's museums specifically, when you're operating in an environment where you can't do mass gathering fundraising events, and when your attendance is just a fraction of what it was. An investment like this from the city has been critical in helping us leverage funds to develop a strategy to ensure that this museum will be here to serve children for another 15, 20-plus years. With that said, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to the City Council and the city staff for their support of the organization. We're so excited to bring this new community resource alive to the children and adults of our community. The People's Museum and Walk of Fame is going to be a multi-generational experience designed not only for children but for adults. And best of all, it will be free, the People's Museum. So with that said, I thank you for your support. We have been making lots of incredible progress with the second and third phases of the museum expansion, which involves the complete renovation and really just re-imagination of the east wing of our building. And we'll have some exciting news to share with our community within the next few weeks about the second and third phases of the museum's expansion. Again, we thank you for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our project.
Any questions?
Well, it's not a question, but if you haven't been by to have a tour from Joseph, you need to go, because he's in there working every day. It's amazing how different that space looks. It's just hard to believe. It's going to be a fantastic, the installations will be fantastic, the space is fantastic. It's incredible. It's a whole different view to that part. So if you want to go by, he'll take you around, and it's a nice little tour of what will be. So thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think we're all looking forward to it.
Thank you all very much. And if any of you would like a tour, please let me know.
Thank you. And then our last presentation, aerial infrared imaging survey of sewer collection system, the results.
All right. Good evening. Adam Stur, utilities engineer, and we also have Hartwell Carson with Mountain True with us as well. So the City of Hendersonville partnered with Mountain True beginning of last year, approached by Mountain True to share the cost of an infrared imaging study. Mountain True received some funding through the General Assembly, and I'll let Hartwell talk a little bit about that funding and the intent of that funding.
Yeah, we, you know, we've been collecting water quality data in Mud Creek and the French Broad River for a number of years, and it showed, unfortunately, a not great trend of poor water quality in Mud Creek and the French Broad River. And because of that data, we approached Senator Chuck Edwards, who was really supportive of looking at what is the next step of figuring out why we're seeing these problems and what we can do about it. So we got an appropriation from the General Assembly to do several things. One was to do infrared imaging of sewer infrastructure, and that happened here in Hendersonville and a little bit in Asheville. It also funded some tests to determine what the sources were, so not just is it E. coli, but what, why, what kinds of E. coli, so human, cow, other types of animals, and to purchase some additional water quality equipment. So that's kind of how this project started, and then we received, you know, a welcome greeting from the City of Hendersonville. So I really appreciate you guys to kind of partner with us to further our efforts to improve the water quality in our waterways.
So in our regard, you know, this study, the main objective was to locate potential sources of pollution that were coming from the city's sewer collection system. But there were also secondary objectives within that study area, which, a lot of places where we have sewer lines, we also have water lines, and water lines leak. Also, you know, the area was flown outside of where we have sewer lines, so there were also some privately owned septic systems that could have potential discharges. There also are illicit stormwater discharges that could be present in the system as well. So a little bit of background about the study. So infrared equipment flew in an airplane on the night of January 18th. It picked that night because it was a cold, clear night, not a lot of foliage on the trees, and, you know, the air temperature was cold. In that time of year, sewer and water are typically a little bit warmer than surface water, just because they're underground, where it's a little bit warmer than the air temperature. So that was flown, the whole system was flown in a night on January 19th, or 18th. Here's a map of our, it's a little zoomed out, but basically of our entire sewer collection system. In green, so it shows our sewer lines. The other side, blue, are our water lines overlapped within that study area. And there were 49 anomalies that were detected, because the only thing the infrared imaging equipment is picking up is that temperature Because the only thing the infrared imaging equipment is picking up is that temperature differential in the water. So it could be a spring, it could be, you know, it really needs to be ground truth. We really need to send personnel in the field to look at these instances. So how we did that is the city's staffed up GIS department, they do really great work, they put together this online map, and we put these 49 anomalies on this map, and it was on an online map, Mountain True also had access, and we just picked off the, our field crews and Mountain True picked off the anomalies one by one, and we turned them to green, you know, once we checked them out, yellow if they were under investigation, red if they had not been investigated yet. So a typical anomaly, there's a few of these, we'll just kind of show you what the infrared equipment showed. You can see on the left-hand side is with infrared system on, right is just an aerial view from, you know, from Google Earth. So you can see there was kind of a little stream of water that was developing behind this house. The green lines on the map are our sewer lines, the blue lines are water lines, and that red line is a sewer line, but it's a pressurized sewer line, it's not a gravity sewer line, the green line. So it was in vicinity, could have potentially been a sewer leak, but it actually was just a springhead in their backyard. Another example anomaly, you can see this one was near some city water lines. It basically was a spring or a seep that was coming out of the ground. And how we tested these, you know, in drinking water, we put in chlorine as well as fluoride, so we can test for that chemical to determine if it's, you know, coming from a public water system or if it's a spring, which wouldn't have chlorine or fluoride. Here's another good one, really visible plume that's entering into a pond in the vicinity of both water and sewer lines. Our staff determined that that was a stormwater discharge from the, I think that was a nursing home facility, but it was not a sewer or water issue. Here's another one, this one is running along a sewer line, and, you know, there's some water that's coming out on the backside of a, it's a pond, so it's an embankment, ended up just being a seep from the pond, was not related to the sewer line. So overall, out of all those 49 anomalies, there were no issues that were coming from the city's sewer collection system, also did not identify any water leaks. So pretty pleased with that result. Would have liked to have found some items so we could have fixed them, but, you know, not finding any issues is also great as well. We did, you know, the city's staff really picked up a lot of the issues that were near city water and sewer lines, and the Mountain True staff really took the lead on investigating the items that were kind of outside of our systems. So I believe Hartwell had, there were some private septic concerns from this study and as well as, you know, just before the study as well. So those private septic concerns remain to be an issue.
Yeah, my summary is that this is really good news. I mean, we know that we have water quality problems in Mud Creek and the French Broad. The sources of those problems are either sewer, septic, or animal agriculture. And we've now pretty much eliminated sewer, at least a traditional flowing-all-the-time sewer leak. I mean, we do know we still have sewer overflows in these big, heavy rain events, and that's certainly something Hendersonville's been working on and making great progress on. But I think, you know, I'm kind of perverse in this work, and I really delight in finding, you know, horrible things. So, you know, I was disappointed we didn't find more, but then realized that this is really a good thing, that we can really take Hendersonville's system off of our list of worries from a, you know, again, from those everyday leak kind of things. I think overflows are still important to work on, but really, my takeaway is we know we have issues with animals, our tests showed us that, but I also think more and more, our data and our work is showing us that we have a lot of issues with septic. I think septic is an issue that's really flown under the radar, because it's, it never is that million-gallon spill that you may read about in a sewer, it's just that small leak that may come from a bunch of places. And Hendersonville is really unique in that it has a lot of septic kind of really close-in, and our work right now is looking at these areas in red and figuring out what the inputs of, you know, bacteria, E. coli pollution are to our waterways from these septic areas. Now that we've sort of determined sewer isn't our main problem, figuring out what of these areas are our main problems and how much problems exist in those areas. We do know for sure, there's a couple of these spots that are, you know, fair contributors to pollution, and so I'd like to open the can of worms to, you know, begin or continue to think about, you know, how we deal with these septic areas long-term. And I'd like to come back to you in, you know, six months or a year and say, you know, we've gotten a little more data, and we think, you know, one, two, and three are really our prime concerns, and talk to you guys and DEQ and, you know, all the kind of entities to figure out what's the long-term solution. Because I don't think it's, you know, one system in these areas. If it's one system, those get dealt with by the Health Department, but if it's kind of a, you know, a neighborhood-wide failure, that's kind of a bigger solution. So kudos to you guys for having a good system. Also, kudos to you guys for, you know, being willing to, you know, partner and dive deeper to figure out. Some folks, you know, they don't want to know what's wrong with their system, because then they have to deal with it. So that was, you know, good on you guys for taking these steps, and looking forward to continuing effort. You know, the water quality still isn't great, but we're making progress on figuring out why that is and what we can do about it.
Questions?
Okay.
So if you went to someone and suspected that their septic system was leaking beyond its boundary, and you showed them this infrared as proof, are they legally required to fix it?
You know, that's a really good question, and I think there's a, and maybe you can answer this better than me, but I think septic problems and repairs are, it's not a very easy solution. You know, we've dealt with Henderson County and Belkirk County and other counties. You know, one instance in Henderson County, it took a year to kind of get the responsible parties together and get them to fix the problem, and there isn't, I think there's not enough staff at the county level to deal with the number of complaints, and then there's not enough help to help homeowners that need that repaired. You know, if you've got a failing system, you know, you're looking at potentially thousands of dollars, and if you say, "I can't afford that," there's not a great tool for the county or others to force you to do that or help you to do that, and that's really something we're looking to do more of at the county level or maybe even at the state level.
Yeah, and I'd like to just piggyback on that, you know, we do have our assessment policy, which really, that is looking at, aimed at getting some of those areas that were in pink, those areas that were identified as our septic transition areas. And so that regard, yeah, would it make sense to do a septic repair where you're going to spend, you know, $10,000? Or would you want to go ahead and start looking at maybe getting a project together to extend public sewer? They're big projects, they would take a whole neighborhood, but that's kind of staff, and I think our process for, you know, for mediating some of these issues, at least where it's feasible, close to, you know, public sewer.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think, you know, if you've got one or two problems, the health departments are good, or, you know, there used to be a great program with the state called the Wade Program, and they basically did this, they would go help you test your system. If you had problems, they had some money to help you fix your problems, it was really positive, but it got cut in the, you know, recession of '08, and they're working to get that back, but in the intermediate area, that may be also a thing for Hendersonville and Henderson County to consider a county program like that. But I do think a lot of these neighborhoods are going to be more than one or two, they're going to be kind of neighborhood-wide problems, which is going to require, you know, extending sewer lines, potentially.
And I would say that I think the challenge that we're seeing from these neighborhoods, and I think Adam can attest, is getting a neighborhood organized, and because you may have one or two or three, and we may know the greater neighborhood's a problem, but it's not a problem until the homeowner recognizes, and, you know, they may be putting, you know, like we all, we put it off, right? We don't put off that big expense. And so getting that neighborhood to organize, right now, we're leaving it up to the neighborhoods, and by no means am I saying that we have the staff time to go out and organize these neighborhoods, but it may be a conversation we have between Mountain True, you know, our staff, the county staff, about a concerted effort to help these neighborhoods get through the process, so something to talk about, because.
He actually answered my question. I was going to ask about, you know, advising a plan of the neighborhoods that were the closest to being able to have sewer ran, and, you know, maybe coming in with some assessments for them of just risk versus cost analysis, so.
I have one more question about your last map. Are you finished?
Yes, sir. Someone else?
The last map, the red, the pink area is septic transition area, does that mean there is a problem?
So that map was, that's from our 2019 Sewer Collection System master plan. So those areas were developed in conjunction with the Henderson County Health Department, as well as just our staff. You know, we get calls from folks that may have failing septic, so just anecdotally, we're seeing issues in these areas, and it could be due to several factors. You know, typically, they're older neighborhoods, smaller lot sizes, they may have a particular soil type that doesn't perk well for a septic system, but these areas were identified as they were close to city limits, close to sewer lines, and they were having septic issues.
Okay.
My experience with septic has been, you know, the new rules are pretty good, you know, if you're building a house now that's pretty thorough, quite likely your septic's going to be installed correctly and work right, but they don't get maintained very well, it's out of sight, out of mind, unless it bubbles up in your yard in your basement, you kind of forget about it. But in the old systems, who knows? You know, like back in the day, pre-permitting, kind of anything went, and I think that's where a lot of problems are, is some of these older neighborhoods that weren't necessarily built right to begin with.
Yeah, and a lot of the older probably designs, they didn't require a septic repair area when that was being designated, so when folks really get into trouble, smaller lots, and they may not have a septic repair area, they just, a smaller lot, so then they have to build some sort of onsite specialty treatment system, and they're very pricey for a private homeowner to, you know, build and maintain.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the work that went into that. All right. We have quite a few public hearings that we need to go to. The first of these is negotiation of an installment financing contract and certain other related matters. All right.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me up at the podium tonight. Just here to explain that we need to host a public hearing for an approximately $17 million bond that we'll be going out for, a limited obligation bond that will be for Parking Deck, Seventh Avenue Streetscape, and a refunding of our Public Works Maintenance Facility. So there is a resolution attached. I'm here to answer any more specific questions you might have about any of those projects or the financing. Excuse me.
And Mayor, if I may, just let the council and the public know that this is the preliminary resolution. We'll have another resolution at your October meeting, if that's correct, Adam?
Yes, sir.
So this is just the first step in a multi-step process to ultimately sell the bonds. We're bidding these projects now, and so we'll have additional information, but this is the preliminary resolution. There'll be a final resolution at your October meeting.
Any questions?
I'm sorry to be the one asking the question.
All right.
Anyone else want to ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just to make sure, if we find out we don't need $17 million, can we reduce this?
Yes, the $17 million is the not-to-exceed amount. So right now, our cost estimate on the three items to be financed is 15.6 million.
Right. Okay. So it's very unlikely they will borrow $17 million, so.
We'll know more by October.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That's what, we put the preliminary number in there to give us enough cushion, and the LGC recommends that we provide enough buffer so that the process is so lengthy that we have the availability for the council to move forward.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
We will open this public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on this first phase of the installment financing contract? Anyone like to comment? See any hands raised online?
Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised.
No hands raised, no one here, so we will close that public hearing. Counsel, comments or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Hendersonville, North Carolina, authorizing the negotiation of an installment financing contract and providing for certain other related matters thereto.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and we're one step further. Thank you. Next, we have an annexation public hearing for Zero Monroe Drive and 2115 North Stony View Court. Mr. Morrow.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm standing in for Mr. Morrow for both of the annexations this evening. Good evening, Adam Mayor, members of counsel. Let's see if I can make this work, we'll see how we do. All right, good deal. The city of Hendersonville has received a petition from Larry and Mary Maitland for a contiguous annexation. The PIN numbers are 9569-460920 and 9569-46-1849. It's a total of .53 acres, and at your August 5th, 2021 meeting, you did accept the certificate, excuse me, certificate of sufficiency, clerk's certificate of sufficiency. You can see the parcel location on the map. I know this is a little bit of a funny one, but the current city boundary does this. So this is an annexation for both parcels. It doesn't work on the television, Mayor, I'm sorry. The boundary of the city, yes, thank you, Brian, does currently go around that front edge, so this is an annexation for both parcels, and it is related to sewer service. And this is the plat, if for any reason you needed to see that, the aerial image is a little, it's a little more context, but the annexation plat is in the presentation. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, if you want.
So as you know, this was, there was a very big discussion about these lots. Becoming part of the city, technically, if they were, the zoning has not changed, even though they're in the city, correct?
So these parcels are currently in the ETJ, and so they already have city zoning.
Right, so the zoning does not change, even though they're in the city?
Right.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this annexation?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
No hands raised, no one approaching the lectern here, so we will go ahead and close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion or motion?
Madam Mayor, I move city council adopt an ordinance of the city of Hendersonville to extend the corporate limits of the city as a contiguous annexation, to annex that property owned by Larry and Mary Maitland, identified as PINs 9569-46-0920 and 9569-46-1849, finding that the standards established by North Carolina General Statute 160A-31 have been satisfied, and that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of the annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and... Those opposed say no. Ayes have it, and motion carries, and we have that one taken care of. And we have another annexation for Zero South Allen Road.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. The city has received a second annexation request. This is a non-contiguous annexation petition from the Cammon Zine family. You can see the names of the applicants there. The PIN number is 958811-9994, and this is a total of 32.6 acres. And you did receive and accept the certificate of sufficiency at your August 5 meeting. So you can see the parcel outlined here. This is the upward road corridor. You can see to the far east of this image, the upward road I-26 intersection, exit ramp, and then moving west across, down upward road, you're moving towards Spartanburg Highway there. The note there, approximately 5,825 feet from the corporate limits, there is a requirement that the parcel be within a certain distance from the city. It does meet that standard as seen there. And we do also have the annexation plat available, should you need to see that. This is the formal annexation plat. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this annexation on South Allen? Anyone? Yes. You would give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Kelton Lastin, 125 Continental Drive, Flat Rock, 28731. I was in this position last year with the council here to annex for the senior housing group. There was an eight-acre parcel that we had annexed, and I appreciate all the work that was done from your end. But I'm here, I'm back, and we have another high-quality list of projects that we'd like to get going on this property. And we've been recommended by the attorney here that we get this entire site annexed. So with your help, we can get that done. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone additionally who would like to speak? Anyone else who would like to speak?
There are no hands raised.
No hands online either? All right. So we will close that public hearing. Counsel?
I'll read it.
Madam Mayor, I move city council adopt the ordinance of the city of Hendersonville to annex non-contiguous property owned by Peggy C. Cave, Eno F. Cammonzine, Paula Cammonzine Carter, Robert O. Cammonzine Jones C. Fleming, identified as PIN 9588-11-9994, finding that the standards established by North Carolina General Statute 168-58.1 have been satisfied, and that the annexation is in the best interest of the city.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of the annexation say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Ayes have it, the motion passes, and that one has been taken care of. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the amended Gray Hosey Mill local landmark designation. Mr. Manley?
Council members, Madam Mayor, good to see you this evening. You have a unique application before you this evening to amend one of our local landmark designations for the Gray Hosey Mill. A local landmark equates to a property of historical significance that's located outside of one of our established historic districts. And it does come with a, an incentive for the owner related to their property taxes. So this one has a little bit of history. It was first added to the National Register of Historic Places in the year 2000. And then it was designated as a local landmark in 2019, and that included a 1.09 acre parcel. Did not include this adjacent parking lot and common area that's associated with the development. And so this application before you is to include that 1.17 acres. So it would amend the existing boundary and total it to 2.26 acres. And it would extend the city's design standards so that any exterior changes that were made to the property would have to adhere to those. They would have to go through a COA process. And in exchange for that additional historic protection, the developer-owner gets this tax incentive. This is a survey from 2019 where the existing parcel and then a number of other parcels were then combined to create a second parcel that became the parking lot and common area for the development. And so you can see the original landmark here on the 1.09 acres, and then what's being proposed to be added to that, the 1.17 acres that's next door. Some photos of the site. You can see the parking lot here and how it relates to the Gray Mill development, redevelopment. And then around the back of the building, on the side, you can see some of the common space and creek that passes by the property there. The Historic Preservation Commission met actually twice on this particular item. The first time in May, it was deferred, and then it came back in July. And they did pass a recommendation to you to prove the adoption of this amended, amending the previous ordinance to include this piece of property. And with that, I'll open up for any questions. The, there's some recommended motions that are on your, in your packet.
Questions?
This designation does not affect any property on the other side of Pine Street, does it?
It does not.
It's only for this. On the other side of the street, that's exactly as it is now, could operate however it wanted to operate under whatever existing zoning there is there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this amended local landmark designation? Anyone who would like to comment? Is there anyone online?
Madam Mayor, Ken Fitch has raised his hand.
Okay, Mr. Fitch?
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. I had not intended to comment at all on this issue. As some of you know, I have very strong feelings about this historic building and the project. However, when I read the minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission before this meeting, it brought back some memories. First, I would say that the first meeting and the first determination by the commission and seconded by the shipo was correct, that there was not evidence that this was part of the project. But then in reading further minutes, there was mention of the Brownfield, and that really brought back some big-time memories. Because some of us were remembered, there was something called the Mill Center for the Arts, a truly wild extravaganza. And it had many, many issues. And one of the issues at that time was the Brownfield area. And when you asked a question about that, nobody knew anything. So I had contacted the Land of the Sky that has some information, and they said, well, you could come up here and meet with the person. So I went up there, and the person in charge of the granting and the determination of a Brownfield site was furious because there had been no application for the federal grant that would cover this. And there was all kinds of documentation necessary to qualify for that grant. The site was eligible, and why was this not done? Anyway, as you know, the Mill Center for the Arts does not exist, and we've gone through a series of projects, some of them wonderful and some of them less so, until we came to the present project. But what gnaws at me is the Brownfield. Because the question is, where was the Brownfield? And how extensive it was? There was no. But the point is, the extent of that Brownfield may have relevance. Because a Brownfield, if it's related to the mill, it says that there is activity related to the mill in the area. So it may or may not have relevance. If it does, it justifies the action, maybe in a negative way, but it does speak to it. But the reality is, the documentation for the Brownfield would be extensive, and you might have the information that has yet not appeared. So that is something I offer. It may be a red herring, but it is something that is definitely part of the history of this whole project. I would just make an observation that clearly we have a problem with what we consider local landmarks. And I think we have to do some clarification as what they are, and where they are, and what should be a landmark, because we have, we're seeing issues now, and we will see them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this amended designation?
Madam Mayor, I don't see any more hands.
Is there anyone else? No one here. So we will close this public hearing. Counsel?
Madam Mayor, if I may, just real quickly.
Yes.
That was a question from the Historic Preservation Commission, and staff was able, did a good job. And we wanted to remind the council, the citizens, and, and we did at the Historic Preservation Commission, is that this was one time a campus. You know, it was, the Gray Mill was a campus, and we are looking at the site as the center of historic industrial activity in this part of the city. And really, if you look at the history of the entire site, is it's a site where, you know, the first industry really came to our community. So we know that, you know, because of an error in the fact that some parcel numbers were not put on a form, that, that part of the area was designated at one point, and now we're asking to add that, to amend the application. That's all we're asking, is that the campus that was known as the Gray Mill site and what was the adjacent property at the time, but all of it is now, under one ownership, be designated as a local landmark to protect the site that was once the Gray Hosey Mill and which is now Gray Mill Apartments. So that is the purpose. As it relates to the Brownfield question, we went through extensive testing, and actually, the site has been designated with the Brownfields Agreement, which then, you know, protects not only the new owners, but also it is on the record with the state of North Carolina. And because there is public water, and really, the environmental issue has dissipated over time. And so it is, it's not great at all. And I think, Mr. Raider is, Ken Raider, the developer's on Zoom if we have any questions, but I don't know if he has any more to add. But I would say that really going forward, this is more about designating the entire site as a campus to preserve and protect for, you know, because the site could still be further developed in the future, and this puts this historic preservation requirements on the site. So I just want to kind of add that and clarify why there was some confusion and why there were some questions with the Historic Preservation Commission. And ultimately, we were able to answer those questions.
Okay. Mr. Raider, would you like to comment at all? It's not necessary, but if you'd like to.
No, thank you. Thank you for your time. Just appreciate staff's time. And it's been a little bit of a technical analysis, and John, manager, Connet is correct that there was really just administrative error in filling out a form three or four years ago. So appreciate everybody's work, and staff's done a great job shepherding through lots of information to determine the proper historic designation. So thank you, and we're excited to have our project up in Gray Mill, up in Hendersonville.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move city council approve the adoption of an ordinance amending the designation of the Gray Mill local landmark to include the Gray Hosey Mill parking lot and common space PIN 9568-88-9541.
Is there any discussion? Not. Those in favor of the motion to amend the designation say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and that has been taken care of. Next, we have an ordinance to amend, let's see here. No, I've got, turned the wrong page, sorry. There we go. A conditional rezoning amendment for West Avenue Villas.
Yes, thank you. And this is another amendment, and modification to a project that has come before you before. And we'll go over that history on this. This parcel is, one parcel removed from South Washington Street on First Avenue, currently zoned CMU. They are proposing a modification to add one additional dwelling unit. They are entitled to 10 as part of a multifamily development, and they are looking to add one additional dwelling unit and to tweak the square footage to increase it slightly for a total of 6,128 square feet. And this is on a parcel that's just over half an acre, right adjacent to downtown. In February 2020, the initial proposal came to the planning board. It included 12 units. It was a single building, very large. And that's shown at the top of the screen here. That product, that particular proposal was deferred, and an amended plan came back to the planning board in June of 2020. And it was for eight units, but it was two buildings, two quadplexes. And that was recommended for approval by the planning board. But then, between June and July, it came back, and it was increased from eight units, two quadplexes, to 10 units, two quadplexes plus two garage apartments in the rear. And that was ultimately approved, and those entitlements stand to this day. They do have some conditions attached. In April of this year, it, a modification came back to the planning board to increase it one additional garage apartment, so a total of 11 units. And then it came back again with a slight modification to change the square footage. It also missed the window. So when it came to planning board and was recommended to go to city council, they had a 45-day window to bring it to you to make a decision. But when they started looking at tweaking some things and modifying, they missed that 45-day window. So they had to start the process back over. And so another neighborhood compatibility meeting was held. They went to planning board again. Planning board has recommended approval of this modified proposal. And so as I mentioned, neighborhood compatibility meeting was held in early July. Discussion revolved around buffers on the site, impact to on-street parking, traffic in general, private water line that actually serves one of the units on Allen Street, how that would be handled, and just a general need for affordable housing. So we take a look at the future land use map. This particular area is designated as medium intensity neighborhood, which has several goals, including promoting walkable neighborhood, design, and compatible infill development as a means of preserving and enhancing existing neighborhoods. And it references architectural guidelines to ensure that compatibility in particular. And so this particular project has many elements that reflect a best practice, a national kind of movement called missing middle housing. And this is a concept for how do we bring density in a way, back into neighborhoods and infill development in a way that's compatible with the surroundings. We see many examples of this. They were very prominent and regularly constructed. They were very prominent and regularly constructed, turn of the century, but it's not something you're seeing built new today. And there's several reasons for that, including land use restrictions, zoning restrictions. And planning staff will be bringing more of that to your attention in coming months. But this project does a lot to achieve the goals of missing middle housing. And just taking a walk around the neighborhood, you can see several examples of it. And all of these are historical. So we're looking at a new development that's going to potentially reflect some of this increased density from just a single family, and providing more units, smaller units, market rate, but potentially more affordable within a walking distance of downtown, jobs, shopping, et cetera. The existing conditions on the site, you can see there, there are some trees, some lovely trees on the site. Many of those will be removed, but for the most part, you have an open, flat, vacant lot. And the tree survey shows, in red there, you see some of the dimensions. All those trees would be removed as part of the site. But on the, what is my right side, the east side property line, there is a strip of trees there, that the current conditions from the previous approval, which still stand, require an 11-foot buffer, and any of the trees that are over 12 inches in diameter within that buffer would have to be preserved. And so that's still part of the plan. The current site plan has shown, a couple of things I'll point out, just the, you see the two quadplex buildings, and the internal circulation for sidewalks. You see the strip of garage structure in the back with the three noted spots where there would be a garage apartments. We see that there is a requirement of 11 parking spaces, but the site is actually proposed to have 18 parking spaces. There's a dumpster area to handle trash, and then there's a one-way circulation, which I'll point out in additional detail shortly. This is a rendering, just a conceptual rendering of what the project could look like. And this is the garage apartment concept at the rear of the quadplexes. So staff finds that this is compliant with the zoning code, generally supported by the goals of the comprehensive plan, and we don't have any additional conditions to add that are related specifically to the modification that's proposed. The previous conditions that are currently attached, just to review those quickly, there's a condition that it resemble the conceptual rendering as shown, and some specific mentions of the colors. We also looked back through the minutes and found that while hardy plank was not agreed to, there was an agreement that vinyl would not be used, and that would be to, again, ensure greater compatibility within the existing neighborhood. The buffer I mentioned earlier, 11-foot buffer, and the condition that the trees within that buffer be preserved, that is a condition that stands. The one-way circulation and 12-foot wide drive aisle was a condition as well. And then the dark skylighting compliance was another condition that's in place. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions. Again, suggested motions are in your packet, and just let us know if you have any questions.
Questions from anyone? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding the amendment to this rezoning? Anyone who would like to speak? Hands raised online.
Madam Mayor, Helen Youngblood has raised her hand.
Okay. Ms. Youngblood, if you would go ahead.
Ms. Youngblood, if you would hit star six to unmute yourself.
Here we go. Is that, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know if the developer was going to make a presentation or not, or address any questions, but we're the family that owns 103 South Washington Street, and that house is a national registered property. We sent comments early on in this process, which is now been going on a year. I think a lot of the conditions that were added, thank you, City Council members for making those happen. The family feels reasonably comfortable with those. And I would have one request, and I don't even know if this is possible, but is it a possibility that when the site plan is submitted, that we could actually get a copy of that? Or typically, people don't notify the public, and I'm assuming you have a public access site that we could go on to. I just want to make sure that that follows suit with what we have in terms of the conditions that are being placed on this permit.
Okay, thank you. I believe that it is available, Mr. Manley, if you could.
Yes, so it would be a matter of public record, and by request, we could make that available.
I would appreciate it when that comes in online. I don't think I have any other additional questions at the moment, unless the developer's going to make a presentation, and I might add to or move them out.
He hasn't indicated unless you want to.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, City Council, attorney, and staff for being here. Let me just first start by saying, I miss Susan Frady, okay? She was great to work with for many, many years. And this project took place during the transition of Susan and the new staff that came on board. It's been quite an experience. I would say half of it is from inexperience on my part, so this has been a learning process. Kind of resent the name developer, but would prefer housing advocate, okay? We put a lot of time into this to provide housing that is now below the average sale price in Henderson County, which is $400,000. All the conditions that the neighbors requested, all but one, we have met. And that we did not go to a 15-foot buffer on the east side of the property, but went to an 11-foot buffer. Had I had to do this project over again, I would start with the neighborhood compatibility meeting, and then go to the city. So I just want to tell the staff, thank you. Matthew Lu, it's been frustrating, but they've stuck with me, helped me through the Development Assistance Department. The missing middle housing, which Matthew spoke of earlier, I've done a lot of research on that, and it's fantastic. And we want this project to be a representative of what that entails, and how we can have increased density within the city, infill within the city, through conscientious development, not big, you know, big, big buildings. So it's been a process, it's been a learning experience, but I hopefully look forward to getting this project in the ground and providing housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Ms. Youngblood?
I believe so. I've had some background in city planning, so I just had some questions that I think have been answered. And I do appreciate City Council members early on. I believe Pro Tem Mayor Smith and some other individuals were very helpful in getting our families' concerns heard, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else seeking recognition to speak?
No other hands raised, Mayor.
All right. We will close that public hearing. Counsel, comments or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council adopt an ordinance of the City of Hendersonville City Council to amend the official zoning map of the City of Hendersonville for parcel number 9568-77-1057 by amending conditional zoning ordinance number 20-560563, finding that the proposed amendment and the conditional zoning of the parcel with the amendment are consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map, and that the conditional zoning with proposed amendment is reasonable in the public interest for the following reason: the additional unit will allow for a variety of housing types close to downtown.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the conditional zoning amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it, the motion carries, and can start working on that. Okay, and the last public hearing, addition and definition of small-scale manufacturing with supplementary standards to a variety of zoning categories.
Madam Mayor, members of counsel, we are asking that this public hearing be opened and continued to next month's meeting. We will be getting a, or speaking with the planning board about a comprehensive plan consistency statement, a component of the motion that they made to recommend that council approve this zoning text amendment that was not explicitly included during the August planning board meeting. So we're going to be taking that back to them in September, and will return to you with that additional information at that time.
Okay. Speaker, do we have to open the public hearing first, or can we just go ahead and continue it?
Madam Mayor, you need to open it, and it will be up to you whether you wish to take comments now or wait till the next meeting, when it's continued.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Yeah.
Question mark. Does this miss?
Yeah.
Could, is there a chance we could put it on the end-of-the-month meeting? Is that inappropriate? I mean, I think we're going to have to vote on something anyway, then. Is that enough time, or does that not give the?
The planning board meeting's September 13th, so your second monthly meeting would follow that meeting.
So, yeah, so I'm thinking, we, that, I'll just, yes, you could put it on the meeting, that's the council's call. I would just advise you, that meeting is going to be a little heavy. So just be aware, we will try our absolute best to keep it to the two-hour window, but there's several items we would like to discuss that are a little bit time pressing before the City Council. So you could do it, yes. I mean, that's obviously.
I just feel like we dropped the ball. And if it's going to be an issue for you, I don't want to do that. For me, I would be willing to sit a little bit longer to cover this, but I'm one voice.
Sir.
I'm in, I'll wait.
How long is the presentation going to be?
The presentation on zoning text amendment?
Mm-hmm.
It's not a long presentation. It's 10, 15 minutes. It basically goes over the definition of the small-scale manufacturing and the proposed districts that we're adding it to, and what specifically we're talking about when we discuss small-scale manufacturing.
Could you supply that presentation a couple days before?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that we could look over it, and then we would maybe have questions already instead of, to maybe save some time.
Madam Mayor, there would be nothing wrong with going ahead with the presentation this evening as well, since you already had time allotted for it.
That was my next question. Yeah.
So I do not have the presentation in the slot.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Come on.
Oh, no.
Sorry, Lou.
We wasn't ready for that. But that was my next question.
Well, I mean, I could pull up my planning board presentation from SharePoint, but I just.
Let's just do what Jennifer suggested, and send it to us a little bit.
Is there something that's supposed to be in this anyway, is why we're having to?
So if I could defend Lu a little bit, it's a little confusing with all the new 160D changes, and this is a pure text amendment, and it doesn't immediately make itself obvious that you have to have a consistency statement because it's a text amendment. And so it was yours truly that said, whoa, wait a minute, when I was looking at the agenda last week, it said, we got to have it. And so, so as not to delay things further, we talked about just going ahead and opening it, and then continuing it, it doesn't have to be re-advertised or anything, so.
I'm sure you can cut that down to five.
So you are the one that needs to have apples next time.
Well, if you want it to be a valid decision.
I like the turtle one.
It's fine not to backtrack. That's cool, Lou, we're good.
All right, Lou, we'll look for the five-minute version.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fine either way.
So we can open the public hearing even if we haven't had the presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You can have the presentation as part of the public hearing, that's no problem.
Okay. So when do you want to continue this? Our?
Are you asking us?
October 22nd? Yeah, I'm asking you guys, before we.
The next meeting.
The October meeting, or the September?
No, ma'am, the September.
September 22nd?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a timing issue if the planning board meets on the 30th?
He says okay.
Okay.
Right? Lou, isn't that what you said?
I was asking Angie.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, no. I mean, the planning board just needs to make the consistency statement. With the new 160D, they clarified that they're supposed to give you a written recommendation and a written consistency statement, and so.
Those don't have to be 10 days apart?
No, sir, no. That's the reason I suggested that we just open it and continue it, so we don't have to re-advertise it twice and do all of those things.
I'm good.
Other questions?
If Mr. McDowell wants to say anything else, can we go ahead and let him make his comment after we open it? That way he doesn't have to come back.
Yep, we can do that.
You probably should come back and just be here. You really should.
I'd like to see the presentation.
Yeah, you need to be here.
I'll have to work with you.
Cool.
Okay. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we will open this public hearing. Counsel?
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion now?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that the City Council continue this public hearing and presentation until Wednesday, September 22nd, at the City Ops at 305 Williams Street, Hendersonville, North Carolina, 28792.
Need to state a time.
At 4, I think it's at 4:00.
At 4:00 p.m.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Not those in favor of continuing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it. All right, we will try to get it knocked out next time, then. Thank you. All right, that's the last of our public hearings. We go on to new business, proposal to compensate rural fire departments for automatic aid. Mr. Gronnitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Volks, members of City Council. I'll ask Assistant C-Manager Brian Polly to please pull up the first map, will be the annexation three-mile boundary map. Mayor Volks, members of City Council, as you know, there's, over the last 12 or so months, there's been a great deal of discussion at the Henderson County Board of Commissioners and throughout the county regarding voluntary annexation and compensation for rural fire departments. Just as tonight, we had two parcels that were annexed into the city, and the concern being that we are taking tax base away from the rural fire departments, which we have the ability to do, and I think it's prudent for the city to continue to grow going forward. Just draw your attention to two general statutes, one being 160A-3, excuse me, -31A, which allows us to annex by petition property that is contiguous to the city, and just the petition has to be signed by all owners of real property and submitted, and the city can move forward. And then 16858, that's 58.1, which is petition for non-contiguous annexation, and it also provides a list of standards. This is included in a memo in your packet. And the standards as it relates to non-contiguous annexation are this, is that the nearest point of the proposed satellite corporate limits must not be more than three miles from the primary corporate limits. You saw that tonight in the presentation regarding upward road. We've started adding the distance from the annexation back to our primary corporate limits. So you saw that tonight, and it was roughly 5,000 feet, I think, is what we saw tonight. Also, I have a map that I'll just show you that I had our GIS Division develop. The blue circle is what a three-mile buffer. buffer around the city looks like. So, it's a very large area, and by no means am I suggesting that the city would want to annex any property, you know, a property at the far reaches of that three miles, but I just thought it was important that you saw the three-mile limit that is statutorily in place now. Also on this map is a green line, which is here is what is we know as the urban service boundary that is a part of the county comprehensive plan, that is an area that was designated some years ago in their current comp plan of where urban services would be encouraged in that urban services. And I think this is important to understand that the area, a good bit around the city is in that, or completely around the city is in that urban services boundary, and that the blue three-mile boundary does somewhat extend outside that urban services boundaries. That's a matter of information tonight. So, a couple of other things that I'll point out is that we have a three-mile limit. Secondly, no point of any proposed satellite corporate, satellite corporate limits may be closer to a primary limits of another city than to the primary corporate limits of our annexing city except as set forth in B2, and I'll cover that in a minute. So, that's just, it's important to know that as you get around Laurel Park and Flat Rock particularly, if a potential satellite annexation is closer to Flat Rock or Laurel Park than it is to the corporate limits of the city of Hendersonville, then we could not statutorily annex that property. So, it is a limitation on, on satellite annexation. And it's important for, for us all to realize that there are statutory limitations. And I will ask the city attorney to correct anything that I get wrong. I know she's watching me closely.
That includes volunteer, I mean, so if someone voluntarily wanted to, we couldn't do it?
That is correct, as it, except for under section B2, if we did have an annexation agreement in place that allowed us to, to basically set up boundaries, and if it just so happened that was in our area, but it was closer to another municipality, we could. But typically without the annexation agreement, boundary agreement, we can, if it's closer to another municipality, and I'll use Halfway Tree Mobile Home Park as an example, we ran sewer to that location. Halfway Tree is closer to Flat Rock than it is to the corporate limits of Hendersonville, and so that's why, one of the legal reasons we did not annex it. Also, from a policy standpoint, something council will have to consider, and that's part of this memo also, is what does it make sense for us to annex property as it relates to providing services? Does it make financial sense? And is it efficient to annex property that may be farther away from the, the primary corporate limits? That it really, from a cost effect and a service delivery, it just doesn't make sense. So, draw that to your attention also. Couple of other things related to the annexation statutes, that is important for the city council to know, particularly for satellite annexations, is if the proposed annexation or any portion thereof is a subdivision as defined by 160A 376, all of the subdivision must be included. So, if we had one single lot in the middle of a subdivision that needed our sewer, even if it's, you know, within the three miles, close to the city of Hendersonville, we cannot annex one lot in a satellite annexation. So, it's important to realize as we look at some of these septic tanks issues, that we cannot annex just one single lot in a subdivision. And that, and that's an important distinction because we do have those single requests from time to time. And then fifth, that the area within the proposed satellite corporate limits, when added to the, all the areas, so if you take all of the satellite annexations that we have out there, if it, it may not exceed 10% of the area within the primary, primary corporate limits. So, that's important to know as we're looking at, especially as we, as we get closer to that 10% mark, and we're not close to that point now, is, is it relates to satellite annexation, that that, we want to make sure that we're annexing property that, because that 10% is a cap, and so we want to make sure we're, we're annexing property that is most advantageous to the city and provides the greatest benefit to those citizens. So, just want to go through those five limitations as it relates to satellite annexation. It's important to, to know those and that there are restrictions statutorily, statutorily what we can and cannot do. I think it's important for everybody to realize that annexation is important and the growth of the city is important. I think we should focus on properties that are urban and high density in ma, in nature and require urban services. And, but it must be cost-effective for the city to annex property that are, for the city and necessarily very rural property is not in the benefit of the city because they may not require urban services. So, just want to draw those, that information and let you, show you that map that, you know, could be a good discussion point of maybe future annexation boundaries with our neighboring communities as well as with Henderson County. So, just point of discussion at this point. Now, to the point related to rural fire districts, Brian, I'll ask you to pull that map up. So, this is a map of the rural fire districts in the county. You can see Hendersonville is here in the middle. Our three response districts are here, the yellow area which is out at Station 2, the primary district Zone 1 or District 1 around Station 1, and then Zone 3 or District 3, which will, is in the south end of town. So, you see those areas. I will just draw your attention and folks on Zoom and folks in the room at the size of Hendersonville as well as the size of these other rural fire districts. So, they're very large areas throughout the county that just, I think it's important to realize the size of the dis, of these other districts that surround us. And particularly, I'm talking to the districts that are directly around us such as Dana, Blue Ridge, Valley Hill, and Mountain Home. And our proposal tonight to, to compensate these rural fire districts for, for annexing property into the city, which, which is legal and beneficial to the, to the corp, to the city of Hendersonville, is to, one, under the general statutes, 160A 58.2A, it does allow, the city is required to compensate rural fire districts for annexation when they have debt. If, if any of the rural fire districts have debt, then we have to compensate them for the percentage of debt that goes along with that piece of property that we annex. So, there is provisions in the general statutes that we notify these fire departments of the annexation, give them 30 days. It is up to them to provide a list of the debt and to respond to our letter. They have 30 days to do that. Excuse me, 45 days to make a good-faced response in order for us to proceed. So, it's important that that is in the general statutes and something that will, we will be doing going forward. However.
Can I have a question on that one?
Yes, sir.
Does it, can that happen after you've actually annexed, or do you have to do that while you're annexing?
It really, I think the part of it is, I, I'll defer to the attorney and.
Without looking back at the statute, which is always dangerous, you, it, you give them notice of the fact that the annexation has occurred.
Okay, has occurred. So, you can do that after you've annexed?
I believe that's when, yes.
Okay, you don't have to do that like as part of the annexation process?
Correct.
Okay.
There's two provisions I will point out is if the section does not apply in any year as to any annex, annex property, which the payment calculated in this section is under $100. So, if, if we look at the property that we've annexed and look at the debt, if it's under $100, then there's no, there's no exchange of money in that case. And also, what is, what complicates this matter a little bit is the city and the rural fire department must jointly present a payment schedule to the local government commission for approval and payment schedule. And what is interesting, we did have a conversation with the local government commission, and they have no set process on how to have this, to make this happen. So, we found that interesting. So, but anyway, that, that statute is there and we, notification will, will happen as it relates to any annexation. Secondly, and this is a new proposal that from, and not in the general statutes, and not required by any law, but a proposal that we would, we would propose to the city council to consider is that we would, we have existing automatic aid agreements with Dana, Blue Ridge, Mountain Home, and Valley Hill, and that we modify, we would negotiate a modification of those agreements with the four that directly surround the city, which are most impacted by our annexations, that we would compensate them for the, the response under the automatic aid agreements would be, we would compensate them with revenue based on the lost revenue due to annexation. The lost revenue would be determined by multiplying the values of the properties annexed by the, by the city times the rural fire district rate. So, you would get the value of the property times what their radius, basically what they're receiving on that individual parcel for fire tax in that given year, and then we would compensate them for five, for a five-year period. So, they would be compensated for each annexed parcel for a five-year period. And that would be our proposal. We feel like that's fair. It allows them to deal with the annexed property, allow them to adjust their operations, adjust revenue to, to make up for the property that is annexed. Looking at the numbers, the, in money we're talking about is it could be, you know, we would be compensating as little as $51 a year for a single parcel to as much as $3,000 a year for a larger tract, depending on where it was and how much it's valued. So, that is our proposal. Staff stands by to answer any questions regarding that and get direction from city council.
Questions?
I would like to make a few comments. This came about, this particular approach came about from really the frustrations with our communications and ability to annex property within the county without it turning into something that was less unpleasant. So, I met with two county commissioners and just asked them, I said, instead of us just fighting all the time, how about giving me some suggestions on how to make this better? And that, this is what came from it. It used to be back in the days of forced annexation, when you went out and annexed an area in the county, you were responsible for the debt, and you were also responsible for paying the fire tax for five years. And so, we basically talked to John about it, and Angie got involved in it, and they pulled up the wording from the old state. What was it? A state?
Statute.
Statute. And took out some of it, and, and this is what they came up with. So, this is how it had been mandated it be dealt with in the past. And that's where it came from. And I'm hoping that this keeps the, the different fire departments whole, and it lets them do the planning, as John said, five years out. I think it's fair. And it also makes our annexation process hopefully more pleasant, and everybody kind of knows what's going on with it. So, that's where it came from. I'm also not going to try to push to vote on this tonight, but, because we just all got this, and I'd like everybody to have a little time to, to digest it, including the county. And we have provided them with copies of this also. So, just wanted to give you a little background that, how this came up, where it came up, and it was from a discussion with, with two county commissioners and myself. You know, John and I a lot.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Appreciate you explaining the, where the five years came from. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would say it wasn't just arbitrary. It was really what was hanging out there. And it, and it was when one of the county commissioners told me how it used to be handled, I was like, well, okay.
Yeah. And I'll add one other caveat to that is, is staff sat down with Ms. Baker and Assistant Manager Polly and Fire Chief Miller, looking at potential options to present to the council. Ms. Baker was, was very clear that, as we know, that you just cannot give money to, to nonprofit organizations. It has to be for a service. And, and we do receive a service from these, through automatic aid, and felt like this was most appropriate and that, that this would be, and Chief Miller was very much involved in that. So, we think it's appropriate. We think it's fair because it does allow them, as, as we've said, to plan, but it's also fair to the citizens of Hendersonville because it allows us to provide that urban service to a piece of property that is going to be more urban in nature than it is going to be rural.
Other comments, questions? Do you want a motion or should we just give you a direction and then when you actually come back with the formal?
I think my wish is, I mean, it's really, this is a policy decision for council. We, if, if council's in favor, we don't need any additional information, but based on what council member Miller, may I suggest that we ask you to bring this item back, give it, give it three days or 30 days to percolate and bring it back and put it back on your action agenda for your October meeting.
That, that seems more reasonable to me. Rather than voting on something tonight to say, please do this and come back and say, this is what we need to do, so.
Yes, ma'am. That's really where, since we just, everybody just got in hands, I don't want to try to force-feed it.
Okay. Any other comments or direction? All right. Thank you. We look forward to having this back again.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks to everybody that's involved in doing that. I really appreciate it.
Okay, next discussion regarding development of the Dogwood parking lot.
So, Mayor Volt, members of the city council, I'll continue to stand here. And at our last meeting, or at our most recent meeting, staff made a presentation regarding develop of many pieces of property throughout the city as it relates to park development and development in general. And following one of those meetings, the conversation came up, should the city council, how there was a desire, or there is a desire to, to build a park at the Dogwood site, the Dogwood parking site, but also should, before we make a definite move to do that, should, can the council really have a conversation and decide, think about whether the best use of that property is a park or whether there's a development site there going forward? So, staff has put some information together. As you recall, we did have, we went through a request proposal process and attracted a hotel project previously by Mr. Satis Patel, went through the project and had a development, a development memorandum of understanding to, to develop a hotel at that site. We went through the process and basically chose the, what the hotel would look like and got very close to moving toward a development agreement. However, COVID hit, the memorandum of understanding expired. And in the interim, there were two other hotel projects in the city, and the city council made the decision at that point to not proceed with the hotel development on the Dogwood site. And so, that's how we moved then ultimately to a potential park at the location and took the property off the market. City council, staff made the presentation regarding the parks and brought us back to the, should we reconsider development on that site? So, we have met, staff has met. Ms. Baker has some information she would show you. Based on her research, I'll let her, I'll just cure up here that we cannot just re-initiate that memorandum of understanding. Since it did expire and city council did officially take action to take the Dogwood site off of the market, that city council will need to take additional action before we proceed any further again. And it, I mean, it's just not a matter of picking up the negotiations where we are. So, let me stop right there and let Ms. Baker provide you with your options going forward as it relates to the development of the Dogwood site.
Is it okay if I do it from here? Would you like me to?
You do it right there, and I'll push the button.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, thank you, City Manager. Okay, that sounds good. Okay. Thank you, city manager Connet, Madam Mayor and city council. So I'm going to back this out from any specific proposal and just talk in general about what might, your options might be with respect to development of this parcel by any private developer. John and I also spoke with Matt McCarley, who assisted us with the Gray Mill project, because eventually if you were going to do this, you would need a large development agreement. And so since he had that experience, we consulted with him and so I'm going to thank him for his input. So basically, we came up with the four options when you're wanting to put some city property forward for development by a private developer. And those are negotiated offer with upset bids, downtown redevelopment projects, redevelopment projects, and economic development projects. So the first of those options is a negotiated offer with the upset bid. And this is what you're used to seeing. We just, within the last 60 days, have done this with respect to a parcel over near the new police department over in that neighborhood, a parcel where Mr. Young's mother owns the parcel next to it. And so he wanted to put in an offer, so he put in an offer on that parcel. It went through an upset bid process and we just closed on that today, as a matter of fact. So this is what you're typically used to seeing. And you can modify this process a little bit, but the main focus in this approach is on price. You're trying to get fair market value for the property. And so the law presumes that if you go out through a bidding process, the bid process will give result in you obtaining fair market value for the property. So with that, you have less control over what's going to happen on that piece of property because like price is your motivating factor. There's case law that says you can't impose conditions or restrictions that depress that fair market value without some sort of special legislation or authority in the statute to do that, which the city does not have. And the developer typically pays all the costs. It's typically not a public-private partnership. This is just a method of selling property that the city owns. The second option is to develop the property with what we would call a downtown development project. Now downtown development project is a public-private partnership. It requires that the facility have some public aspect to it. So for instance, you see convention centers and a city-owned parking deck, right, as one project together, where you're truly putting the money and the efforts together from the city and a developer to develop it. One of the benefits of this approach is that a private sale is allowed. Now, what do I mean by private sale? A private sale means simply that you don't have to put it out for bid. You can negotiate a deal with one person. In order to do it, you must find that the project will have a significant effect on revitalization of the city. But one thing that this gives you is a lot of control. So it gives you as much control as the developer's willing to give you contractually over what this is going to look like, how it's going to affect the downtown or the city and, you know, how it's going to fit in, a lot of control. It also allows, since it's a public-private partnership, the city to make improvements to benefit the project. But this still requires that the developer pay the fair market value, taking into consideration the restrictions. So for instance, with regards to the hotel, if you said this has to be a hotel, that's going to affect the fair market value of that and you'd have to have an appraisal to tell you what the fair market value is, taking into account those restrictions and that the developer would have to pay at least that much for the property.
That's the question on this one?
Sure.
In this circumstance, if part of it is some type of public, is the property owned by the city and the private developer jointly, at least the part of it that's the public use?
You have to spell that out and negotiate that out in the agreement. So for instance, at least part of it has to be owned by the city though. But you could have it all in the city and lease it to a retailer or a, you know, what, hotel or whatever. But some part has to be owned by and used by the city for public purposes. But it's all, that would all be subject to negotiation.
And on the fair market value, since it's not being open to bid, is there anyone that would have a, I hate to use the word cause of action, but I don't know a better word, to say, well, you're not charging them enough money to do this? Like, because there's no bid process, who determines if it's, if it truly meets fair market value? Or I guess that judgment, who makes that judgment?
Yeah. So you would rely on a professional appraiser.
Because you could rely on that?
Absolutely.
That could work. Okay.
Yes.
That's good. Yeah.
I think you would want to do that.
Right, yeah. You wouldn't have to have a bid to establish that. The appraisal could be enough.
The appraisal could be enough.
Okay.
That's true. That's correct. All right. So closely, it's kind of a first cousin of a development project, downtown development project is a redevelopment project. And a redevelopment project is one that is done pursuant to a community development plan. Now, what is a community development plan? A community development plan is a plan that, to either eliminate blight or to benefit low to moderate income persons. So you've got to have a community development plan in place to use this option. So if you wanted to use this, you would have to develop a plan. And then pursuant to the plan, you could do a redevelopment project. It also allows a private sale. It gives you all the control again over the project, as long as you can find that the, what you're doing is in the public interest, the city can make improvements, and again, the developer pays fair market value considering the conditions imposed. So the biggest difference here is it's got to be to either eliminate blight in the city or to benefit low to moderate income people. And so lastly, the last one may not be obvious because it, you know, like for instance, for the last proposal for the property, the hotel, it's a commercial property. And you don't typically think of commercial properties in terms of economic development. For economic development, the statute says that your primary considerations are, and you don't have to meet all of these, you have to meet some of these. Taxable property, increased taxable property, increased employment, increased population or growth, agricultural, industrial, industrial output or business process, prospects. So any of those is enough to support an economic development project. Now, the interesting thing, when I was going through and thinking all of this through about this, is that we typically use economic development to advocate for high-paying jobs, right? You want tax-based and high-paying skilled labor jobs. But legally, that's required only if you are giving a discount on the property value. If you are selling it at fair market value, what the economic development statute allows you to do is the private sale. You don't have to put it out to bid and then you still have all the control. But then you can get a little bit more creative in, in maybe the types of jobs or that, you know, than you would normally. Because for a true discounted property, they'd have to pay, have a substantial number of jobs that pay at or above the average median average wage in the county. That's what you're typically used to seeing. But if it's a fair market value sale, you can start to tailor it to look a lot like a redevelopment project without having the community development plan in place. So for instance, let's say for the hotel project that was being considered, you could say, well, the only requirement is that you have to determine what the wages will be, not that they meet any certain threshold. So you could say, well, downtown, you know, there is a certain need for unskilled, jobs that unskilled labor can do that would have benefits and that would help them and have growth opportunities and things like that. So you could say, well, we want this project to benefit low to moderate income persons. You know, it's downtown, there are low to moderate income people that could walk. You know, you can start to get a little bit more creative, which isn't typically what you do in an economic development project. But if it's a fair market value sale, you have a lot of flexibility there. So again, you have all the control in the world over the project, including aesthetic size. You would want to say, you know, you may want to say what the taxable capital investment has to be. I would probably advocate for that. And you'd probably want to say, if you don't do the project within a certain number of years, you got to sell the project, property back at what we paid you for it. But if it's a fair market value sale, you don't have to do that. But I would, I would advocate again that you do that because, again, the whole reason you're doing this is to carry out some plan or purpose of the city. It does allow the city to make improvements. You got to find a public benefit. And if you do spend city dollars, like if you weren't contributing anything to the project at all, you wouldn't have to have the clawback. But if you're going to spend city dollars to say extend water and sewer or do street scape improvements or something like that, you would also put some clawback that they would pay that back if they didn't meet the, you know, the contract requirements that they said they were going to meet. So it seems to me that the, this last option really gives you the most flexibility to consider what you'd really like to do with this project if you want some sort of development to occur through a private developer.
So Madam Mayor, members of city council, we wanted to provide this information to you if you do choose, want to go forward. And I think that's what staff is seeking tonight, is guidance on how you would like to move forward with the Dogwood parking lot. And I appreciate Ms. Beaker doing her extensive research and providing you with four great options with the economic development, I think being the option she feels is the most appropriate for what we feel like the city council. If you, if the city council chooses to go forward with the development project, would give you the greatest control and the greatest flexibility to work with a developer on that site. So we wanted to give you that information so you would have it and can, it may be helpful as you think about how you want to use it or discuss how you want to use this site. So I'll stop right here and we'll stand, staff will be available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments?
No questions. I do have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
It does seem to me at the, at its basic level, since all of these are talking about fair market value, that we need to get an appraisal of this property by like a real estate appraiser. We did not do that before, or let me rephrase that. The oldest is six years old. Let me rephrase that. So it does seem to me that regardless of whatever we do, that's, that's something that we could, I believe, tell city manager tonight, would you please begin the process of getting, even if we didn't have a project in mind? I think we could tell you to do that. Right. So it seems to me that we should probably at least do that, considering the elements old and the market's gone crazy in the last 18 months to see what it's worth. So that's one thing, one comment. I still believe that a park is the best use of the property. So with that in mind, I would like to at least see if there's the feeling on the board that we could at least look at some plans for what a park might look like. So we at least have an idea of if we go with a park, rather than waiting to start putting it together later, if we go with a park, we at least have a plan and idea if we were to do a park versus something else. We've talked about a park, but we haven't really sat down and put even a back-of-the-napkin drawing together, in my opinion, of what a park would look like. So I, those are the two things that I am recommending tonight. I will admit that I wish Ms. Beaker had been here before because you really brought up a lot of points tonight that we did not have when we started this way back when, as far as things that you can do. Because I had never thought about the public aspect of the property. Like, there could be a public aspect of that property or that development as well. So I certainly would like to think about that with regard to a project because I, I don't think we ever discussed that at all before. It was basically, we sell it and somebody does something, as opposed to there being some public aspect to it. And I didn't know that until this president, or until tonight, I mean, obviously until today we put this together. But I didn't realize that, that you could do something of that nature.
Any comments?
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah.
So does it make sense for the city to pay for an appraisal if we, when you're selling a property, right? Is that, I wasn't aware that that was kind of a standard. I mean, would we not use kind of estimated tax values and then sales analysis for comparative like comps and then list the property based off of those numbers as opposed to a full commercial appraisal, which are really expensive?
I'm always going to recommend an appraisal if you're going to.
I didn't hear you.
I'm always going to recommend an appraisal if you sell property because it's the only way, really way to know for sure that you're, you know, and it's defensible. It's always defensible.
Okay.
Because we all know that the tax value can be on target or not, right? Depending on which year the rebow cycle it is, depending on the market. It, you know, and so I'm always going to, John can tell you, that's one of the first things I've did when I came, we talked about it, is we always need to get an appraisal.
And then my other question, oh, I guess it's more just of a comment, but I love the idea of a downtown park and I really want to see it. But we, three of us did vote for a hotel to be developed on that, on that property before COVID hit. And I think that the highest and best use of that property is an economic development project. And there are a lot of other properties downtown that I think that we could use or consider for. And so I would still really like to be able to use, you know, or to see that property be developed if that is available to happen in a timely manner.
Other comments?
So I have one question about the appraisal. I'm in favor of getting the appraisal as well, just because I think it gives us the most information to consider when trying to decide what we're going to do with the property. But we could also get that cost reimbursed if we decided to sell it, right? Because typically the buyer would pay the appraisal.
It would be totally subject to negotiation.
Okay.
As to whether, you know, you build that, try and get that cost back. But typically, that's just the cost of.
Doing business?
Doing business. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. My other comment would be, I would much rather see this piece of property be a park. And not just because I'm working with the Kiwanis to build the splash pad, but I think that it's a better use for the property. We already own the property, so now we're not having to go out and find a new location to put the downtown park. And we do have two hotels that have already been approved in the time that we've since done the last one. So we can't tell the future. We don't know if those hotels are going to be built. And I don't really see the need for us to have three hotels in downtown. So I just think it's a little hasty of us to move forward with that hotel when it's, I feel like it's better suited for the park.
Yes, ma'am. I think we absolutely have to get the appraisal, period. I don't care what the plan is long-term, we have to get the appraisal. I would encourage us to get the appraisal underway and use all our pressure and influence to get it done right, but to get it done in a timely fashion. As far as doing a conceptual drawing, I don't know what that entails really, but you know, as long as we're not having somebody go out and do an absolute definitive plan on it that costs a fortune, I don't have a problem with that either. It'd be okay. But I think we also, while this appraisal is being done, we need to get as much information as we can. And I know you've already been trying to do that on the status of the other two hotels. When I brought this park thing up, I kind of said, prefaced it with, as long as we had another hotel coming up, you know, one of the hotels was coming out of the ground, I'd really like to see this be a park. But we don't have either right now. We have approved them, but we still don't have any definites on it. I know the Shipman family feels very optimistic and they're readying their sales office to open, but we don't know for sure what. open, but we don't know for sure what Mr. Barker has got going right now. So there's a lot of balls in the air, a lot of really cool things, but I totally agree with Jerry, let's get an appraisal, I think, especially with her, and she's really close to me saying that, I'm going to agree with her. That we need to move forward with that, so that's my two cents, Mayor.
Yeah. I just think we're still so up in the air. If we knew for sure that those, that the other hotels were going to go up, because the whole thing that generated this was, we need a downtown hotel. We still have time, not ready to dig up any of that asphalt, at least until after the parking garage goes in. So I'm kind of, yeah, go ahead, we forget the appraisal, maybe if we don't have to spend a whole lot of money to get a park concept idea going, but not make any decision until we absolutely have to.
Can we do a park concept in-house? I mean, just draw some lines, nothing like the ADW guys, I mean.
So I think, I think what I would suggest is that we engage Hunter Marks and his group from a landscape architect standpoint, along with our staff. They worked very closely together on Seventh, the Seventh Avenue Streetscape, Maple Street. They have a good relationship. I think under the, our Mini Brooks Act exemption, which is anything less than $50,000, I think, and I think we could do a concept plan, which I had generally discussed as we're looking at potential sites around the city, that they would be willing to do that. So from a landscape, unless Ms. Beaker disagrees with me, but I think that would be my suggestion is that we, since we have a relationship with Watermark Landscape Architect, have him do that and work with our existing, not only our engineering and public works and utility team, but also our community development team, and come up with some ideas. And that we could do that as a rough sketch drawing.
Okay.
If that's the desire of the City Council.
With the splash pad?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Anything else? Is that enough input for you to take the next steps?
Do you need a motion?
No, I think I see a majority consensus on that, so I think I'm good.
All right, okay. Thank you. City Council comments? Anyone have anything they need to, would like to share with us? I'll just mention, we did have the first meeting of our Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Everyone was there, had a chance to get acquainted with one another, to look at some possible goals for the committee, and the decision was to meet every other month. The chairman elected was Jane Jennings and the vice chair, Josh Williams. And it was a good meeting, and I look forward to the next one. Anyone else have anything?
Yes, I just, this is in my role as a school teacher and of course also as a parent, I just want to thank the police department for helping us figure out five points going into and out of the high school without a light being there. So I'm just expressing my appreciation on a personal level for our police department being around there in the mornings and the afternoons. It is a little bit still a confusing intersection. I almost, the other day, leaving school on the weekend, almost turned left, just like, my house is that way, you know, just not thinking. So the signage is good, and we appreciate the police department's help.
Anyone else? Okay, City Manager report, anything?
Yes, ma'am, just real briefly, speaking of parks, we do have a conceptual plan related to Edwards Park, and I will just, would like to share it with the City Council and share it with the public. And let me just clarify that this is very conceptual. You will see just high-level images. There's names on buildings that are not set in stone, that can change. And so I just want to be very clear with the public, be very clear with the City Council that this is very conceptual, but it gives you an idea that a putt-putt facility on this site would work, would work. So let me just start right here, and I'll briefly go through this, won't spend a great deal of time. You'll see here Edwards Park, the, what we'll have remaining with the transfer of the property to Henderson County for the VFW. I just point out the area on the lower end there for the putt-putt facility and also a 40-by-30 concession stands building, and we'll see some more images in just one second about that. I do want to point out that the existing Boy Scout facilities are still in their existing location, so they are on the site and are continuing to plan to be on the site. So I'll ask Brian to move the site forward. Just some schematic, we won't spend much time here of just of what potential some elements may look like, including the architect that looked at this focused on a lot of things that are important to the history of Hendersonville and important, such as the bears, such as a public gathering spot, and really, as I look at that as a, some artwork and kind of a gateway I can walk through. So some interesting concepts there. So Brian, one more time. So this is an aerial view of the site. Once it's improved, we'll point out the building here, the putt-putt facility, handicap-accessible, levels spread out with nice landscaping, as well as the area over here, which is more of a park space and a gathering space with the public art there as a concept. Brian, please. Again, another view, the view coming from, this is looking up toward the high school up North Main. This is Locust Street here, and you can see a nice sign there and the public art piece there, gateway. So really improves that intersection there. Brian, the next slide, please. This is a picture, again, of the concession stand, a pavilion area. Again, the name on the building, I think, well, the name on the building would be Laura Corn Minigolf. They added Edwards Park, but ultimately, the name will be the Laura Corn Minigolf facility there. So you see that. Next slide, please, Brian. Here's another aerial view, again, showing areas of some common space and looking from the other direction, from basically the roof of the VFW, and the nice kind of open pavilion area under there with the concession stand. One more, please, Brian. Here's a view through the public art piece, just kind of give you an idea of the scale. And you can see there the playground area of some swings, climbing pieces, some other things that the public, the public can use in addition to the putt-putt facility. Another view there.
John, could I ask something real quick on this?
Yes.
And, you know, if you don't like it, don't hit me, guys, the splash pad people. Could splash pad go there? Is that...
I don't know if there's enough space for both the splash pad and the minigolf.
Well, I'm talking about this looking like the playground area, that looked a lot bigger than I thought it'd be. And I know this is conceptual, but I was just curious if...
I will tell you, without the scout buildings being drawn on here, I think there's less room there than...
Than we think, yeah.
It just looks, it looks like really, you know, big here.
No, I'm talking about, yeah, the backside.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Without the scout buildings there, I do think it looks like there's more room there than there really is on that side.
But just threw it out there for, because then it could happen faster. And if it was where there's already recreation, it's kind of cool. And that doesn't say, do away with any other parks or whatever, it's just, I hate to say, is it possible to look into it a little bit more on that? Just bringing in the splash pad people? You've bugged me about it forever ago, you've been doing this. It's just a suggestion, I don't want to get in the middle of it.
I mean, I know that the splash pad that's currently planned needs at least 1,900 square feet, and that's not including a pathway around it or anything like that.
That's like a water park.
It's a pretty big space, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of, I think my original, like, idea for our splash pad was that we had, you know, like, bubblers and holes that came up out of the ground, and kids just ran around, kind of like every other splash pad up in town. Not actually a water park downtown, but that's...
Well, it's not a full water park, it just has the table and some things that come down and little tot sprinklers, it's for, so everybody can use it.
What's the table? I didn't know what that...
It has like a water table, so if kids are in a wheelchair or have any other sort mobility issues, they can roll up to it and still take advantage of the splash pad and do, I mean, some of the kids' museums have like the water tables where you can put the little things in, and yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't know what that was.
Like splashing it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Very good. Brian, if you'll move forward. Couple of, just, again, pavilion space, we'll keep moving forward again. Again, I think this is a neat concept of having an area there that, in addition to the putt-putt, there's some other games, cornhole, horseshoes, things like that, so that you're having an event space there. So there you go. And then an aerial view, and a couple more, Brian, just real quick, I think, moving forward. Yeah, just other views, and last one. That's it. So just wanted to share that with you, very conceptual going forward. We'll continue to have our folks develop that out. I will have them take a quick look to see how much space is with the playground and that area on the corner, but that is our conceptual this one, so.
Okay. Yep.
I know it doesn't apply to this, or relate to this, but it does relate, because someone asked me this this weekend, I didn't know exactly, the tennis courts or the tearing down of the racquetball courts to build tennis courts? At some meeting, you gave us a roundabout figure of when that would happen. Could you tell me that again?
So the funding source is intertwined with the transfer of property, and I think Tom is...
So the clock doesn't start ticking until we do the transfer with...
Yeah, I think Mr. Wooton has got some pricing for the demo of the, of the...
Racquetball courts.
Racquetball, and then once the courts are down, then we could, so I would suspect sometime in spring or summer would be when that project...
Thank you, somebody asked me, and I said, "I know you told me something, but I can't remember."
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right. We do have a request for a closed session. If someone would like to move to enter a closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A, 1, 3, 5, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney, to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness of an individual public officer or employee.
I feel like we should clap.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Not those in favor of entering closed session say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, ayes have it, we're in closed session. Do you want to take a...